And Manana Sizus, many of God’s blessings. The Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Historic Preservation will come to order. This public — it is now nine o’clock this morning for the record, and in accordance to 5GCH Chapter 8, Subsection 8107, notices of this public hearing was sent up via email to all the senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on January 28, Thursday, adhering to the five-day notice. And also, the second notice was out on February 2nd, adhering to the 48-hour notice. Please note that written testimonies can be submitted to the office of Senator Tina Munya Barnes at 155 Hessler Place, Hagat, New Guam, 96910, or via fax mainly at 4723400, or through email at senator@tina munya barnes dot com. Furthermore, if there are any questions, any more questions, you can contact our office at 4723455 or 56. Ladies and gentlemen, on the agenda this morning is Bill Number 247-33COR, which is an Act to Appropriate the Sum of $820,000 from Fiscal Year 2015 Hotel Occupancy Tax Unreserved Fund Balance to the Guam Museum Fund for Museum Operational Cash Flow, and Bill 218-33COR, which is an Act to Add a New Section 40128J and to amend 40128F of Article 1, Chapter 40, Division 4, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Including the Participation of Municipal Planning Councils of Southern Villages in the Review and Approval Process for Proposed Commercial Developments. Joining me this morning, ladies and gentlemen, is my colleague, Senator Tom Attia Sizus Masi for joining me, and also walking into the public hearing room is Senator Tony Attia. I’d like to thank them for joining me this morning. We will go ahead and entertain 247-33 right now. We do have — before we start, I’d like to recognize some of our elected officials. The mayors who are joining us this morning from the village of Meleso, we have Mayor Ernest Charclaff, thank you. From the village of Inalahan, we have Mayor Doris Lahon. And from the village of Agat, we have Mayor Carol Tayama. Also in the audience is Director Joe Cameron and Mr. Clifford Guzman from GBB, Board of Directors. At this time here to speak on Bill 247-33, I have Mr. Joseph Cameron from the Department of Chamber of Affairs, and I also have Alasia Casil. You’re more than welcome. Are you here to present testimony on Bill 247? Sure, please have a seat. Before I have you guys present your testimony, I will go ahead and speak briefly on the bill, give an analysis, and also note for the record that also joining us this morning, ladies and gentlemen, is Senator Tommy Morrison. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Bill 247-33 is an Act to Appropriate the Sum of $800,000 from Fiscal Year 2015 Hotel Occupancy Tax Unreserved Fund Balance to the Guam Museum for the Museum Operational Cash Flow. The legislature finds that the museum is a necessary component for our tourism industry. Many visitors coming to Guam want to hear about our 4,000-year-old story, but our island lacks a proper central facility and repository that will store and tell Guam’s unique heritage. The Guam Museum will enhance visitor experience, allowing our visitors to view Guam as a unique cultural destination with a very rich history, with a very rich history and heritage. We also found that Guam has been attracting student tourists from around the road, so we want to note that there is a market already on island that is interested in learning. Also noting for the record, many events will happen on island, on our island, within the next few months. We want to include that PATA, the PATA Annual Summit, which is the Pacific Asia Tourism Association, and also the Festival of the Arts, which will be held from May 22 to June 4, which will encompass over 27 countries, island nations, with over 2,700 artisans, and Guam’s delegation alone will be represented by 500 artisans. We want to make sure that the museum has the necessary funding needed to operate during this period, especially since this is a long-awaited and a new kind of undertaking for our government. It is important that this museum has the adequate funding to get through the beginning phase of its operations, which is usually the most demanding portion of any startup organization. Presenting this morning is Mr. Cameron from the Department of Chamber of Affairs. I’d like for you, Mr. Cameron, to go ahead and state your name for the record, where you come from, if you support the bill, don’t support the bill, and then present your testimony. Sina Masi.
Sizus Masi, Madam Chair, and most especially, your esteemed colleagues, Senator Morrison, Senator Attia, and both Tony and Tom Attia. Thank you so very much.
Mr. Cameron, if I may, one moment, please. Just like to add something for the record, and I should do it earlier because it’s an important financial piece, if I may. I want to note for the record, ladies and gentlemen, and to our listening audience out there, that in 2015, based on the financial impact statement, that there exists a $2.3 million in the 2015 HOT unreserved fund balance, so that was the, an impact statement that came, financial statement that came down.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Again, I am Joseph Arturo Cameron, the President of the Department of Chamber of Affairs, that has administrative purview under its umbrella, the Guam Museum, and I am here to testify in that capacity and to express my support for Bill Number 247, an Act to Appropriate the Sum of $820,000 from Fiscal Year 2015 Hotel Occupancy Tax Unreserved Fund Balance to the Guam Museum Fund for Museum Operational Cash Flow. A total of $529,710 was appropriated in 2015 for the Guam Museum through Public Law 33-66, and at that time, it was the intent that the Department of Chamber of Affairs would operate the facility, and the funds were earmarked specifically for additional personnel through April of this year. It was discussed and anticipated that there would be a subsequent appropriation for other operational expenses to take us through the end of this very fiscal year. Since then, the Department of Chamber of Affairs decided that it would be in the best interest of the people of Guam to contract out the management, operations, and maintenance of the facility. The scope of services was put out to bid, proposals were accepted and evaluated, and notice of intent to award was given to the most qualified proposer. This contract has since been negotiated and is presently being reviewed by the Attorney General to format prior to the final signature of the Governor of Guam. Our intent is to have the museum fully staffed and operational in time for the upcoming Festival of the Pacific Arts this May through the rest of this fiscal year. While the long-term goal is to make the new museum as self-sustaining as possible, there are a myriad of startup operational costs that must be addressed before this can be actualized. These costs can be categorized into five distinct areas, including but limited to, number one, management and administration. The management and administration will be designed to achieve accreditation in the shortest period of time. This includes accounting and finance, administrative functions, human resources and staffing, negotiation with vendors, suppliers, and tour agents, safety, security, and quality management, as well as inventory and property management. There are numerous other operational costs that will need to be addressed, such as outfitting the retail space with museum-branded and also culturally-produced merchandise, store design and furnishing, as well as the café component. In addition, exhibit lighting for the changing exhibit areas will be procured and installed. This is just the tip of the iceberg to get the museum operational by the opening of FestPAC. We anticipate that the museum will be open seven days a week and will require a minimum of two shifts, along with full security and custodial services. Our contractor has assembled a fine team of local experts and off-island expertise who have proven experience in managing projects and museums of this magnitude. We are confident that they will be able to meet our expectations, provided we can obtain the funding required. Number two, collections management. Our current collection at the museum includes over 250,000 objects and artifacts that have to be properly inspected, curated, conserved, catalogued, and digitized. This does not include the thousands of objects and artifacts that are currently being held and trussed with various archaeological firms on behalf of the Department of Chamber of Affairs. This first year will be spent on a forensic review of our existing collection management systems and engaging a pilot program from which an accreditable collections management plan can be designed and implemented. Our contractor’s plan includes working in collaboration with the University of Guam, the Micronesia Area Research Center, and local archaeological firms to identify additional collections that should be properly curated into the museum’s collection. Number three, exhibitions and educational programs. The new Guam Museum will be a center for education and a participatory, fun, and exciting place for our community to gather and experience our heritage and culture in meaningful ways. Our educational programming includes outreach to all our public and private schools for rotating field trips, as well as to our institutions of higher learning as a research center for history, anthropology, and archaeology. We are currently poised to work with Guam D O E and DODEA on continuing education programs. We will be reaching out to nearly 160 history and Chamber of Affairs teachers this summer with pre-visit lesson plans and study guides for their students in preparation for the next school year. In addition, we will feature an extensive dossier, volunteer, and tour guide training program, ensuring that they are well-versed and confident about the information they present. Our interpretive education programs will be designed to reach our entire community through interactive, changing exhibits and activities, in-house educational programs, special presentations, and workshops. Number four, public relations events, sales, and marketing. Public relations events, sales, and marketing will drive interest and admission fees to help augment and/or offset funding requirements. This includes print collateral and brochures in the various languages to serve our visitor industry, creating interest for membership and endowments, and a whole host of marketing via traditional and electronic mail, email. Because of the unforeseen delays in the opening of the new Guam Museum, we will miss inclusion of the traditional sales brochures that tour operating companies publish in our source markets. Consequently, we will have to be creative in reaching our tourists. Number five, facilities and ground maintenance and repair. The cost of the construction of the new Guam Museum represents one of the largest investments our government has made in recent years, and it is important that the museum facilities are maintained properly. The foregoing is but a broad overview of the various tasks that must be undertaken just in this fiscal year, of its first year. The challenge is that the current appropriations will not be able to sustain the necessary operations to the end of this fiscal year, nor can our contractor be expected to hire the appropriate staff or contract with vendors on a long-term basis. As it stands now, we are attempting to condense what would normally take months of preparation into a scant three months. We further anticipate that we will not begin to see significant revenue generations until August of this year, when the permanent exhibits are up and running and completed. However, with the proper planning, we can maximize our revenue streams from event fees, membership sales, grants, retail sales, and other revenue opportunities once FestPAC is concluded. In closing, I would like to thank you, Madam Chair, and your committee members for your efforts in helping us fund this exciting center of history and culture for our people. I would also like to thank Speaker Wampad for assistance in providing us with flexibility to address some of our challenges through Bills 23533 and 24233. Together, we can and will proudly open the doors of the new Guam Museum, welcoming the FestPAC delegations and ushering a new era of cultural awareness and pride for our people of Guam. Undankulana Sizus Masi, Joseph Arturo Cameron, President of Chamber of Affairs.
Thank you. Ms. Casil, would you like to present oral testimony? Just support, just support. Thank you very much. Senator Attia, any questions?
I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Cameron, you mentioned something in your testimony here about the unforeseen delays in opening. Now, I think it was just, was it last week, there was something in the paper that it was going to be opening like in mid-March?
According to GIDA, who’s handling the contracts with inland builders, that date has been earmarked as March.
The opening?
Yes, the actual completion of the building, yes.
Okay.
There’s other components that need to also work itself in, and that’s with Delphi Corporation and Barry Howard Limited, that would actually walk in and actually start putting in place their fabrications and the museum items itself. So between March and May, that will be a work in progress to meet those deadlines.
So is it correct, then, to understand that the, maybe the structure itself will be finished by March, but the interior is going to be work that will be in progress between March and whenever you—
And the completion, yes.
And when is that, when is that completion date being looked at?
We’re still pushing for, in time for FestPAC.
Okay, all right. The other thing is, what kind of efforts are being made to, and I’m sure it’s not too early in the game yet, to coordinate, you know, this museum with the other museum operations that we have, such as the one at Naval Station, very, very educational and informative, Wha in the Pacific, it’s the one here up to Nimitz Hill. It’s a small operation, but it has some historical aspects to it. So what are the thoughts about coordinating these so that, in fact, they complement each other?
Thank you for that question, because we had a task force several years ago that did comprise of those individuals from those various facilities and exhibits. They’re very happy to work with us with our traveling exhibit opportunities that allows for those items that are necessarily not exhibited in their facilities, or there’s an opportunity to expand that exhibition into the new Guam Museum traveling exhibit area. So yes, there is a buy-in for that, and that takes a lot of coordination and efforts as well. And I have communicated directly with Clifford Guzman, with the Lighted Group, who has been awarded the contract for the museum management, and we’re focused on that.
Okay, all right. And just, Madam Chair, just for the record, I’m happy to, that you provided that information, that there was about, what was that, $2.3 million in this unreserved lapses, and the museum is only asking for about $800,000.
One time only.
How much?
One time only.
Well, fine. But there’s also other needs of the tourist industry that depends on this source of income, about $1.3 million of safety-related improvements. And so I just, Madam Chair, you know, I just want to stay for the record, I’m still going to continue to push for the hearing on Bill, I forget what the bill number is.
Previous, yes.
So that we can push for those improvements also, because when FestPAC comes, I have feeling that Tumon is going to be just as much inundated as Agania will be. Thank you.
And thank you for that comment, Senator Attia. Clearly, we support the endeavor that we do have a safe Tumon area, and clearly, the administration acknowledges that and supports safety for our tourists. Of great notation would be, like any other great, huge events, this one particular one that’s coming in May is an Olympics of culture of sorts. And that being said, there are followers. There are followers that follow this particular event every four years, and different island nations host, and Guam is now the host this year, so.
I thought FestPAC was in August.
No.
No, that’s in May 22.
Hello.
May 22 to June 4.
Yes, and Senator, of great value to tourism, we anticipate that there’s an additional 10,000 followers populating our hotels, and they’re fast running out of rooms. So if any of you guys are looking, or your family is looking at staying in a hotel during that time, do it now. Start doing your reservations, because they’re fast filling up.
Sizus Masi, Senator Attia. Senator Tony? Senator Tommy? Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to commend your efforts, all your efforts and working, all those involved to ensure that our museum is transitioning and operating smoothly for, not only for our visitors, but for our residents, our people in Guam. I also want to note, at least for the record, and appreciate the efforts that Mr. Cameron and his team is making to address the interim fee schedules and make sure our public’s fully aware of what the associated cost will be to helping sustain our museum going forward, despite what we’re trying to, attempting to do here, Madam Chair. I also want to comment on Senator Attia’s point that although we were excited about this museum, there are other issues out there, and not only safety concerns and all that. As you’ve assisted, Madam Chair, with some of the facilities in our southern communities, we also want to ensure that as what you see in the museum is what you will also see outside in our community, and ensure that those facilities, not just in Tumon, but throughout our island, are also addressed as far as their concerns. So I know we’re doing that through the HOT Bonn projects, but we know there’s other projects that we need to address. So if you can keep that in mind, Mr. Cameron, and that these other facilities out there that need attention, that will be exhibited in the museum, that at least with our guests or residents that go out there, that what they see in the museum is what they will also see out in our community. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. Mr. Cameron, I want to say thank you for taking the time to present your testimony and support of. I realize the need, the needed funds for this project. As you know, we need to showcase Guam to the rest of the world, having 27 countries come here, and a lot of them for the first time, because this is the first time that this side of the region of the Pacific will hold this Festival of the Arts. Again, that being May 22 to June 4, right?
Correct.
With over 2,700 artisans that will be here.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. If there’s nobody else from the audience who would like to present oral testimony on Bill 247, I will call Bill 247 publicly heard. And again, if anybody in the listening audience would like to present testimony, they can do so by sending it into, by fax to 4723400, or email at senator@tina munya barnes dot com. Sina Masi, Mr. Cameron.
Sizus Masi, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Attia. Next on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is Bill Number 218-33COR, which is an Act to Add a New Section 40128J to and to amend 40128F of Article 1, Chapter 40, Division 4, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, and this is relative to Including the Participation of Municipal Planning Councils of Southern Villages in the Review and Approval Process for Proposed Commercial Developments. We do have a list, and I’d like to recognize the mayors from the southern villages that are here this morning. Again, undankulana Sizus Masi for taking the time. I will call you folks up first, from the village of Inalahan, Mayor Doris Lahon, please. The also Mayor Carol Tayama from the village of Agat, Mayor Ernest Charclaff from the village of Meleso. I do have LaSia, right? Casil from the safe southern Guam. Would you like to present oral testimony? Please have a seat. And we do have several other folks. I will call them up as soon as these presenters are done with their testimonies. Mayor Charclaff, if you do not might, I will yield to the women, if that’s okay. I’ll start. Oh, I do apologize. Thank you, Senator Attia. I will have Senator Tommy Morrison, who is the author of this legislation, to go ahead and give some brief openings regarding Bill 218. Do apologize, Senator Morrison. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thank you for also scheduling this public hearing on 218. Like many residents of the south across the island, and across the island, I was surprised to learn about this 15-story, 144-bedroom hotel, which we all discovered on a local news organization. Thereafter, my office received quite a number of emails, phone calls, and comments via social media from residents who were caught off-guard and believed that the current and delicate water, sewer, power, and roadway systems, the environment, and the quality of life in southern Guam were suddenly in jeopardy. While I support real opportunities to strengthen our local economy, I also believe that economic development across our island must be done according to a plan, an organized approach that has been publicly discussed by our community and government regulatory agencies. A northern and central Guam land use plan was developed several years ago, which helps to facilitate responsible development in these areas. However, a similar plan for the south has yet to be produced. My office has reached out to Governor, the Governor’s Office, the GIDA Administrator, the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, for their assistance in establishing a sensible plan for the south, and to ensure that residents and village leaders are involved in the discussions. Moving forward, and as our community works to create a comprehensive plan that will guide economic development in southern Guam, Bill 218 seeks to build upon existing laws such as Public Law 3368 by Senator Frank Blos Jr., which requires municipal planning councils to express a view on all variance applications, zone changes, and government leases within districts. Bill 218 calls for the embassies to register their approval or disapproval relative to land use proposals, a decision that will come from public discussions that each village and not from government agencies, and that they will also facilitate. This type of discussion may require a single community meeting or several, depending on the magnitude of a particular project and the input from residents who will be impacted. These community conversations will be driven by village mayors and MPCs, which will help to determine if proposed projects are consistent with the needs and desires of village residents. Madam Chair, since introducing Bill 218, I want to note that we’ve been receiving many testimonies from our residents, a lot of them are here, present from our mayors, also from folks in our community as safe southern Guam, and that have really provided a lot of input in how we could move this legislation forward. I appreciate some of the recommendations, and I want to note that for the record. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Senator Morrison, also those who are not here in attendance but had submitted testimony were Felix Ardunka, former chief planner of Department of Land Management and former director of Department of Land Management, had presented testimony. Also presenting written testimony was Dr. Lee D. Carter. So again, I will go ahead and start with Mayor Doris Lahon.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Senators Tommy Morrison, Tony Attia, and Tom Attia. For the record, my name is Doris Flores Lahon, Mayor of Inalahan. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to hear my testimony in support of Bill 218-33, along with my municipal planning council. Southern Guam is peaceful and calm, filled with nature’s beauty. Building hotels and other large-scale projects without the knowledge of our residents will be a catastrophe. Senator Morrison— catastrophe. Senator Morrison, thank you for your bill. The mayor and his or her municipal planning council must pass proposals based on the voice of village residents on projects proposed to the Guam Land Use Commission. To properly review such projects, there are other government regulations, policies, and plans that the mayors and their MPC members will need to be provided and/or be aware of. The following are just some of the government regulations or policies I'm referring to. GWA's current condition and limitations of its facilities and infrastructure within the municipalities. Is there a master plan for improvements for facilities and/or infrastructures? GPA's current condition and capabilities for such projects within the municipalities. Is there a master plan for improvements and/or additional power upgrades within the municipalities? Update on old wetland and special flood hazard and regulatory floodway areas. Are there any government plans being considered at this time that may affect the current zoning law, specifically Title 21, Division 2, Chapter 61 of the Guam Code Annotated? Would it be possible for the government to facilitate some type of a forum, perhaps every three years, to address issues mentioned above? The objective is not only to inform the mayors and the MPC members of the utilities and land planning within their municipalities, but to also provide feedback to the government on what is or are affecting the municipalities. Sisus maasi.
Thank you. Renfrobitzua, Mayor Luhon. Mayor Tayama, please.
Buenos dias, Madam Chair, Tina Munia Barnes, Honorable Senators Tommy Morrison, Tony Ada, and my former classmate, Senator Tom Ada. For the record, I am Carol Esteyama, the mayor of Aggett. I am here this morning to show support of Bill 218-33. The idea of building a hotel in the south, and most especially in the village of Aggett, was a surprise to me and my vice mayor. There was no public hearing held, no village meeting held, or even an approach to us in the mayor's office. None of my municipal planning council were even informed. We don't know what's going on. And I don't blame the group called the Safe Southern Guam for organizing, because I would have done the same thing. This is, it was a shock, and I did approach Senator Morrison to please help us out. And thank you, Senator Morrison, for introducing this bill, because we in the south have always been forgotten. The northern and the central, their mayors and their councils are always informed of any major development to be done in their villages. Us in the south, and like Mayor Doris said, we want to keep it peaceful. We want to keep it small, because that's how we like it. We like it to be a very peaceful place, where people can go out and just have barbecues at the beaches, or even at their farms. So, with this bill, it will surely help the leadership in the villages who should be recognized and approached for any major and infrastructure to be built in their villages. I really think that courtesy should be provided to the mayor and its municipal planning council, so that a public village meeting is held, so that everybody is informed of what's going to happen. I do have something written down here, so I'll just go ahead and read it, but basically, that's just, you know, coming from my heart of how I feel regarding the proposal of building a hotel in Aggett. The process of approving developments or the installation of major infrastructure in a village should have the input of its mayor and municipal planning council, input from residents of the village that are important part of the growth or change in any village, and must, at the very least, be heard. All too often, we forget that though we love to see our island prosper and grow, there are voices that must be heard. The village mayor and the municipal planning council are the representatives of the residents and know the sentiments and concerns of the villagers. All we ask is a place at the table to provide a way for villagers to be heard. Bill 218-33 is the key that will allow us to open the door so developers may come to our village and lay out their plans and future outlooks. We will open the doors for them, but we want to have the option to ask them to leave if we do not agree. Thank you again, Senator Morrison, for introducing this legislation, and for supporting the villagers of the south. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome. Senator, Mayor Charclaff?
Thank you, Senator. I believe every time I come here, you just miss a senator.
One day.
Maybe one day. But I've always, I've never been a scholar, but I've always been a gentleman. I always used to my female colleagues anyways. Anyway, for the record, my name is Ernest Charclaff, and I'm the mayor of Maritzo. Madam Chair, Senator Ada, Tom, and Tony, and Tom, Senator Morrison, thank you for, I'm here in support of Bill 218. As you know, everybody knows that the southern part of the island is the most pristine part of the island. And collectively, the people there chose to live in that direction. When tourists come here, they want to come and see, they don't want to, you know, they leave the concrete jungles of Tumon and the central city to come to the concrete jungle, to the real jungles of Guam and the pristiness of the southern part of the island. Not only, you know, the clear waters of the south, but the jungles that give you a breath of fresh air, as opposed to the vehicular traffic that they inhale during their stay in Tumon, and the congested areas of the central. And I'm glad that the municipal planning council, because they are just an extension of the mayor's review of the village to ensure that the village is getting what they need and what they want. They put their minds collectively together to provide for the residents of the villages. And this is one way to ensure that you're not only using one hand to review, but a collective, you know, heads to go ahead and come up with the best laid plans, and to ensure that any development is reviewed by a core, rather than just one person. And, you know, you can get over one person, but when you're dealing with, you know, six or more people, you have six or more people to wine and dine and take their inputs and their recommendations. But this is a step in the right direction, and providing that these municipal planning council members do have a say-so, do have a voice, rather than just relying on the mayor himself. And anyways, any development, as long as it's planned development, and it's mindful of the infrastructures, and it doesn't overburden, because progress and improvement is inevitable. It may not happen in our time, but as the population grow, so does development. It comes with it, you know what I mean? But at least we provide for the southern villages to try to stay as pristine as possible, because that's where the tourists go to, to enjoy and see a different outlook and where they came from. Because it's almost like a trek back in time as far as development is concerned. So, like I said, I'm here to support, and we empower our, you know, municipal planning council members to be a part. And then I say, you know what, Mayor? You not only chose me, but the law gave me the right to be here. So, that's one way to validate their effectiveness as municipal planning council members. Otherwise, they serve at the discretion of the mayor, but it also gives them a little leverage to the mayor that, you know, we are empowered by law to help you to decide, and what's good for the village as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. Good morning, Senator Tommy Morrison, Senator Ada, and Senator Ada. For the record, my name is Lasia Cassil, and my family is from the village of Sanorita in Aggett. I am also co-founder of Save Southern Guam. Save Southern Guam is a grassroots movement with over 2,000 Facebook members. It's growing every day. We were organized to preserve the land, ocean, culture, lifestyle, and identity of southern Guam, because southern Guam is the heart of Guam. Southern Guam is our people's last connection with our heritage with the land, with our seaside villages, our farms, and pristine mountains. Save Southern Guam is against the construction of the proposed luxury hotel in Aggett, or any other commercial projects that contribute to the erasure of the cultural and identity through uncontrolled, unchecked, and poorly planned growth and development. This project was announced to the community on the front page of the newspapers without any involvement or consultation with the community whatsoever. Save Southern Guam, for the record, is not opposed to economic growth, but any economic development must prioritize authentic and culturally relevant values, projects that create, preserve, and promote architecture suitable for our island, as well as industries that embrace our culture through dance, cuisine, fine arts, language, and ecotourism. Economic development, especially in the south, must add to, but not take away, from our aspects of our way of life, such as agriculture, fishing, hunting, and our special connection with the land. Why are we opposed to this particular development? First is the environmental impact. There's no question that a project of this size will have considerable impact on the surrounding environment, from the displacement of the surrounding marsh wildlife and the destruction of the trees and land. There's also the runoff into the ocean and the impact on the sea life. There's flooding mitigation, the influx of traffic, congestion, pollution on Aggett, not to mention the taxing of power running, water, and sewage on village residents. This environmental impact has a direct and drastic economic consequences as well. Damage to our environment is damage to our economy. This is the only, tourism is the only industry we have outside of the military. There are ways to protect our land and culture and boost our economy, and we need only look beyond our island to find the solutions. Just looking at our neighbor Palau, where they've created the Palau National Marine Sanctuary Act, creating a marine sanctuary twice the size of Mexico, protecting itself from drilling and overfishing. In cities around the world, there are preservation societies. Another example is ecotourism that we must explore for southern Guam. My third point is the culture. Any large-scale project that does not reflect authentic native traditions and values is not good for Guam. The mission statement of the Guam Preservation Trust is to protect Guam's historic sites, culture, and perspectives for the benefit of our people and our future. The small villages of southern Guam are a culture. We need to preserve them. Regarding our community, who will these projects, proposed projects benefit? The developers always claim that jobs will be created, but what impact will the development of the real estate have on the surrounding area? I've worked on many commercial real estate projects, and I've seen the ripple effect that these projects have on the surrounding areas, raising property values and rising rents, driving out the very people that these developments claim to be helping from their own communities. So, the people of Aggett are going to have to move even further south, because they won't be able to afford, you know, to live there anymore, if projects like these exist. The next point is regarding this EB5 visa, and I'll be frank about this, because the developers made a strong point about it on their website and marketing plan. When we speak of luxury homes, like the one that's proposed to be built, we talk about a class of people that don't just own one residence, they own several. These aren't full-time residents, whose children will be going to Southern High or Ocean View High School, or attending the village fiestas, or celebrating christenings, birthdays, funerals, or anniversaries. For this project, we're looking at foreign nationals, looking for a second or third vacation home, and/or legal entry into the U.S. So, thank you, Senator Morrison, for proposing this bill. Just two streets over from this development, on Palais Duennis, is where my great-grandfather, my tata, had his taro ranch, and next to that is where my grandmother had her ranch, and all her sisters lived and raised their families. Every Sunday, our families convene on this street, and we sit under the mango trees, and we celebrate life's special moments and barbecue. This is our way of life in the south that is threatened. In conclusion, I and the members of Save Southern Guam are opposed to the development of this project, and support Bill 218. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tom.
Thank you.
I certainly support, well, first of all, does the sponsor have any questions?
I'll go ahead and save it for half.
Okay. I just have several questions. I certainly am supportive of the concept of, you know, southern Guam having a say in what goes on in your district. But I'm just, on page one, it talks about the municipal planning councils, and it names the various villages. And it's not clear from here whether each village will then, you know, submit its position for or against a certain project, or is this going to be a decision that will come out from a council of southern Guam, consisting of the mayors from Sanorita, Aggett, Yumadec, et cetera. And the reason why I raise that is, let's say that there may be a project that is being proposed for Maritzo, okay? Down there where, you know, and so if Aggett, if Sanorita, Aggett, and Yumadec thinks it's good for them, because all the drive-by traffic and all that will benefit them, they'll probably vote yes. And the representatives from Talafofo, Jotny Talafofo in Iran, think similarly, that whatever this development's going to be in Maritzo, that the traffic that it's going to bring is going to benefit them, then they may also vote in favor of the project. But the people in Maritzo may not support the project, because it is going to be disruptive to their community. But he is outnumbered by, you know, by the surrounding villages, as opposed to, is it going to be a consensus from the group, or to each one his own? And so, I just raised that as a question, as to that maybe we need to take a look at that aspect of it. And you mentioned, Mayor, that maybe it should be a decision coming from a core group, as opposed to individual entities. And so, I would just pose that as a question. The second part is, again, on page one there, in this new section that's being added, it talks about that these various councils shall review and express its approval and disapproval on proposed hotels and similar large-scale commercial developments. And on that, I would, somehow, as I look at that, it seems that maybe we're kind of narrowing what it is that this southern group is going to have a say in. If it's a hotel, we want a say. If it's a similar large-scale commercial, well, what if it's not? What if it's a landfill? So, maybe we need to find a more, a broader language as to what it is, you know. I don't know. It's just that the way it is right now, it seems like it limits your input to hotels and similar large-scale commercial developments. So, that just kind of gives me, causes me some concern. The, yes, sure.
Oh, no, because my understanding, Senator, is that within their respective communities, what you're probably alluding, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're alluding to is that it's going to be a combination of the various municipal planning councils and putting themselves together to support or disapprove of southern developments. I think when it comes to matters pertaining to my community, what I can do is seek, what my council and I can do is seek the support of the other mayors. my councilman I can do is seek the support of the other mayors and the municipal planning councils, they're strength in numbers. But I think when it comes to developments within the Southern, that all the Southern, it doesn't run rampant because when you allow one, there might be a possibility of another one taking place as well because they've already, you know, like the landfill, or it was an appropriate name, it's done, done, you know, that, you know, it's a done deal, I mean, it's done, done deal, which is, I don't know if it was predetermined, pre-approved already, but by the time the residents were up in arms, it's already approved that it was a landfill. I was part of helping the residents to try to get that away from the landfill, but it's already done. I mean, so, you know, what I want to do is that ensure that when things are planned are not predetermined, or it's just a matter of formality, that the reviews being made just to pass whatever requirements the government needs. But it may have been already predetermined that it's going to go through regardless of what the mayor or the municipal planning council members come up with. And I think, like I said, when the time comes, when the mayors work collectively together with their respective council members, and what is the core of our mentality is to save the pristine-ness of the Southern villages. And anytime any development threatens that, I think collectively we can support each other, mayors and municipal planning council members when those times come. I may not be the mayor then, but like I said, progress and improvement is inevitable. It's going to come. It's just a matter of time. I might be gone already by that time, but at least while we're here and we're protecting the pristine-ness of our Southern villages, because that's where the culture is still alive. All the fiestas, you can go there because of the influx of the various ethnicity up in the Central and South. Down in the South, I mean, the North, down in the South, the culture is still very much alive. The warmth of the people, the hospitality is still there. That's very prevalent because everybody knows each other down there. Unlike some of the Central and Northern, sometimes you don't even know your next-door neighbor. Over there in Maritzo, at least, I can speak for myself, almost everybody knows everybody, you know, regardless of whether you're a transgene that's moving in, they're going to eventually find out who you are, and you're going to eventually find out who the people are because the atmosphere is always friendly and always cordial to whoever, new or old residents. So when time comes, I'm pretty sure the mayors and their respective council members will seek the other mayor's support so that, like I said, the strength in numbers will matter to the powers that be because development, if it's not checked, it's going to run rampant. So thank you very much.
Senator Ada, the way I see this bill that Senator Morrison introduced is that there is an existing law already for the Northern and Central Guam, but there's none for the South. And that all we're doing is trying to be included in that law so that we are informed of what's going on in our village.
Fine, and I have no problem with that. I mean, I certainly would be very supportive of it. All I'm suggesting is to give some thought as to whether the position of the South is to be represented by the majority of the Southern mayors versus, you know, eight different positions being, I mean, maybe Charloff, you even mentioned yourself, it's easier to pick off one at a time than it is to pick off a whole group. So that's all that I'm pointing out. So it's kind of like the mayor's council, I guess, the mayors as a group vote on an issue, and whatever the majority's views are, then that's the position that will prevail. That's all I'm suggesting, as opposed to, you know, nineteen different mayors walking out of that room at nineteen different positions, and we never cross paths. That's all I'm saying.
And I think what's very important here is that the village that is being affected will solicit help from the other villages and the other municipal planning council because for this one instance here, for that hotel in Aguek, I didn't know anything, but my colleagues, we all got together, and they're supporting that, and this is why this came out, that something like this, humongous development, we need to know about it. Sanorita needs to know, you know, everybody in the South needs to know. And we do get together and we discuss about, especially us Southern mayors.
All right. I just have one final thought that I want to put out, and on Section 2, it makes an amendment to the existing law that the, that basically the municipal planning councils shall review and express its approval or disapproval on all various, right now, that's the existing language, "all." And I just want to make, again, that seems a little inconsistent with what the new language is, the new provision that's being put in in Section 1, where the position of the Southern mayors shall review and express its approval or disapproval on proposed hotels and similar large-scale commercial developments. So that's a narrower application versus what the application in Section 2, which is to review and approve all applications. I mean, I don't know if you're going to have time left to do your other responsibilities. So again, just give it some thought.
Senator Ada, if you recall, back in the early '80s when Kokus Island was proposing to build bungalows out there, people that can come there and stay overnight, and there were several bungalows. At the time, I was opposed only because I'm a fisherman, and during the storms, those bungalows are going to add to the overflow of sewers. And Kokus is not even ten feet above sea water level, and when the waves come in, they're going to wreak havoc on the bungalows. And that's what happened. Many of our residents were there to testify against the development, but I guess money was the object rather than keeping the environment to safe, and they did not heed to the powers of nature. They built only because they were blindsided by they were going to make money because people want to go there. But they weren't mindful that Mother Nature, what man builds, God can break, you know? What man can make, God can break. And that's what exactly happened. It was, I don't know, like I said, it was probably a predetermined matter already, and all the input was just a formality, but it went through. And sure enough, it took God's act to show them that I don't care how much money you got. You put the bungalows there, you know, the waters, and it washed everything away. And I'm sure that, and I hope at the time, because the environmental history has been there, that in anticipation of the storm coming, that they draw out all raw sewagees and transfer it to the island so that when the waters come, it has a very minimal health hazard for public health, for the public who swim and fish out in the lagoon and the surrounding areas of Kokus Island at the time. So these are things that if we empower the, you know, the community council members, the power, so that there's more strength in having their collective minds together to influence what development comes to their villages, because we know our villages and we know that this is not, you know, you cannot have unanimous. You're going to have people that want it and people that don't. But when we put our minds together, it's what the village wants as a whole, as opposed to the few, the minority. Even the majority may have their say, but the minority will still be opposed. It's a matter of what's in the best interest of our villages, and I believe collectively with the mayor working with their municipal planning council, that's why they're compulsed for that purpose. And like I said, if we need help, or if a future mayor needs help to fend off, is just to ask the neighboring mayors and their council to come and support us because if this happens in our village, it wasn't going to prevent it from happening in your village. It becomes a domino effect. Thank you very much. But I just bring it back as to what happened in Maritzo and Guam. Well, see, it happened, the residents were up in arms. We didn't want it. We didn't want it. But it was crammed down and rammed down our throats, and sure enough, you know, God showed them that, you know, whatever you do out there, God will make you pay for it because you're not protecting yourself. Money was the object, but eventually they lost a lot of money because all that investment eventually went down the drain. Thank you very much.
And Senator, as far as the verbiage of the law, maybe, you know, because we're not lawmakers here, maybe you can work together and help with Senator Morrison and make it so that it's a law that is similar to what's going on in the Northern and Central. Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Any questions for this panel? Senator Tommy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank my colleague, Senator Tom Ada, for his input, and certainly I'll work with him and the committee, Madam Chair, to address those concerns. I want to also address that this is just the start of what we're attempting to do here, and working with Madam Chair and the committee, we are working closely with the administration, Bureau Statistics and Plans, GIDA, all those that are involved with some forward-thinking by previous legislatures, particularly the '19 legislature that authored a law, a public law, 19-38, if you could write that note that down, because that calls for a Southern development plan. And this is going to be a great thing to take this a step further because this will basically determine, although we are not against some real economic opportunities for our Southern communities or anywhere throughout our island, certainly we just need to address this through a plan going forward. So I just want to make that clear, that although Bill 218 is addressing or building upon existing legislation that gives the municipal planning councils to express their view, as you stated, Mr. Charloff, the concerns of Kokus Islands as an example, this gives, tightens it up now to giving the MPCs the authority and providing notice of approval or disapproval. As it extends right now, it's just an express view. I don't know, and obviously, experience being shared here is exactly how far an express view can go. So it is my hope and intent that giving, tightening up this language, giving similar language in other processes of approval or disapproval, any variance is what empower the community at large to provide this understanding that we do not want to proceed this way or we want to proceed this way. But I just want to put this on record that public law 19-38 is, that we discovered through some research, knowing that there is an existing process to determine how a Southern development plan should proceed. I will work with the mayors. I know I sent copies out to each and one of you to also look at, and I've been in meetings with the administration to see how we can proceed. So I'll work with my committee chair and rest that are providing input. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. I do know that Mayor Gogui just stepped in, and I'd like to welcome him to present some testimony. Just for the record, ladies and gentlemen, we do have several others besides Mayor Gogui who would like to present oral testimony. And before I start, just because the mayors are sitting at the table right now, two questions to mind for me was maybe what kind of expertise may be needed in guiding the municipal planning council members to conduct their due diligence, might be food for thought, and then what qualifies as a large-scale commercial development that Senator Ada spoke about earlier. And another one was, what about all the other villages? And now that we know that it's in the Central and Northern areas, including the Southern villages, so that answered number one. But I think it's important that we look at what existing legislation is today that qualifies for large commercial development versus small and medium and pilot projects. But at this time, I will go ahead and entertain Mayor Gogui, and then I'll have the three other folks in the audience to present their oral testimony. Mayor Gogui.
Thank you, Senator. Again, I'm Mayor Gogui, the mayor of Orde Chalampago, and I appreciate this opportunity. I didn't mean to kind of bypass others who have signed up to give testimony today. But I just wanted to kind of highlight, you know, I noted this is a change to Chapter 40, Title V, which is really the section that applies to mayors, and designating things that they should or should not do, or should be doing in their capacity as mayors. But I kind of see where Senator Ada is actually coming from, Senator Tom Ada is coming from, with regard to, you know, there is some ambiguity, I believe, is really what we're looking at in regards to this particular legislation with regard to large-scale development. And Mayor Tayama had alluded to what Senator Morrison had pointed out with regard to what has already been done for the Northern and the Central region of our island, and that's basically a master plan. You know, Bureau Statistics put together a master plan for the Northern and Central areas, and that there has yet to be a document that has been prepared and even, and/or even published for the Southern districts. But it goes beyond just the master plan and what we're looking at here today in this bill. And it's really about looking at development, any development, for me anyways, that occurs throughout the island of Guam. And the reason why I came this morning to listen in on this public hearing, even though you noticed Orde Chalampago is not listed here, is just the recent development, proposed development of the Pago Bay Marina Resort in Jonya. Now, this is really, to me, more of a Title 26, the zoning law that affects our island, and that because the development is actually occurring on the Jonya side of Pago Bay, Jonya was notified, Jonya was, they scheduled a public hearing to be held in Jonya, but at no time in the process was Orde Chalampago notified of the public hearing. And at no time was my office notified that this project was going, by the government anyways, that this project was going to occur, even though we did have, I did have a courtesy visit from the planner representing the developer that they were intending to do this. And so when I found out about the public hearing, I had sent an email to the director, and I said, "Well, will there be a similar public hearing in Orde Chalampago for this project?" Because the impact is probably going to be more so in Orde Chalampago if this high-rise gets, if these variances get approved for this Marina Resort, more so than Jonya, believe it or not, only because the traffic has to go through, any traffic going to Jonya has to go through my district. And at this point in time, if you ever sit during rush hour, whether it's the morning or the afternoon, at the Route 4-Route 10 intersection, which is the intersection going to Mingilo or heading down towards, into our village and down towards Sanahania Hagatnya, you'll find that it's horrendous, that the traffic easily backs up a quarter of a mile, if not longer, during rush hour. And when I got a reply from the director, he said, "Well, by law, the zoning law that the developer who pays for all of these, you know, these things, is only required to hold or to pay for a public hearing held in the municipality that the project is being proposed in." So that meant, you know, there wasn't going to be, and they couldn't require the developer to do, to hold a similar public hearing in Orde Chalampago so that the community of Orde Chalampago could have some input and actually even be given a briefing by the developer on what was going to occur. So obviously, what we did is, we said, "Hey, look, people of Orde Chalampago, here's a project that's going to occur on the Jonya side of Pago Bay. There's only going to be this public hearing, and you need to, you know, if you feel any concern about, or would like to find out more information about this proposed development," like to find out more information about this proposed development, you need to attend this particular public hearing, because there will be no similar public hearing held in Orde Chalampago because of the zoning law requirements. And I really think that that's the gist of what I think Senator Morrison is trying to convey in this, in this bill. And that maybe it's not, it doesn't belong in Chapter 40, that maybe it belongs in the zoning law portion of our Guam code annotated. Because, you know, when it comes to, and in fact, when I saw the bill, I, I think Senator Morrison, if you recall, I even sent a reply and saying, well, this is really vague, like you had pointed out. What's large-scale development? The hotels is obvious, but what, where do you draw the line on large-scale development? I mean, one could say Home Depot is a large-scale development, or, you know, if we build a Walmart, maybe that's considered a large-scale development. But what if we bought, build a strip mall that's going to have 40 units in that strip mall? Is that considered large, large-scale development or not? I mean, you know, I understand the concerns. But from our perspective as mayors, if we believe that it's going to have a potential impact, that we should have the ability somewhere, whether it's in Chapter 40 of Title V or in the zoning law, we should have the ability to say, we believe there's going to be an impact, and we believe that a submission of input from us is warranted. And more importantly, we would like to have, maybe have a public hearing held in our district, because we would like to discuss with the developers and with the planners, whoever is involved in this project. We would like to hear what they have to say. And more importantly, we would like our residents to have an opportunity to comment on what you're planning to do that could potentially impact not just the district you're building in, but the district surrounding, you know, this project, the other districts, the other municipalities surrounding this project. And at this point in time, the law doesn't allow for it and doesn't require it. And if you attended the public hearing, and I know that Senator Uggan did, if you attended the public hearing, there were over 120 people, residents, from throughout the island that attended, some as far down as Moleso. But I can easily say, because I was at the public hearing as well, that two-thirds of the people that attended the public hearing weren't from Jonya, they were from Orde Chalampago. Because of the residents of the 300, over 300 homes that I have in Pago Bay, they were going to be directly impacted. They talked about utility problems, you know, low water pressure. And if you have a high, you know, two high-rise towers of 304 units tapping into the line that feeds their area, I mean, imagine what, how, how much more problems they'll have with the pressure, the water pressure in that area. And they talked about how the sewer line has routinely broken along Route 4 that feeds that area, comes from Jonya through Chalampago out to Orde, and then down to Hagatnia wastewater treatment plant. That, you know, they're concerned about the breakage that has commonly occurred since, at least since I've been the mayor, there's been three major breakages of the sewer line in that area. And so we just wanted, the residents came to me and said, Mayor, are you aware of it? And it wasn't until they came to me to make me aware of that project and the public hearing, that then we mobilized and said, okay, we really need to get this out to the community and, and let them know what's going on. And more importantly, encourage them to attend the public hearing, which they did. And, and so I guess really, to me, and trying to read between the lines, so to speak, there's got to, all we're asking as mayors, is there's got to be an avenue, that if there's going to be an impact, that we have the ability to articulate that impact, and more importantly, to have that impact, or have our input carry some weight. And whether it's a, it's a council of mayors, as you had pointed out, or individual municipal planning councils providing input, I mean, I mean, it's going to take a little bit more, I think, study on our part, and I hope the legislature's part to find the balance. Because I, I too, I believe in development. I believe in that growth is inevitable. But there's got to be some balance between this development and growth with, with, you know, immediate concerns of the community as well, as well as perceived concerns, as Mayor Charaglove had pointed out, on what was, what was identified that could potentially occur on Cocos Island, and actually did. And so, so who, you know, and you, when we come to these public hearings, and when we, we meet with the senators, you're always saying, who knows? And the people of this island always says, who knows better about what goes on in their village than the mayors themselves? And I believe that to be a true statement. And so we're saying that, you know, if that's the case, and if we truly believe that statement, there's got to be some sort of mechanism that even though a development's going to occur in Aggett, if Sanarita says, I think this is going to have an impact, and I would like, you know, a similar public hearing to be held in my village, that we're given the opportunity, even if it's going to cost the developer an additional amount of money to hold a second public hearing, that that be afforded to those mayors who would like a similar hearing conducted in their village, you know, so that they can listen in, listen to the developers on what they're proposing, and how they're going to intend to mitigate some of the concerns that the villagers may have, and then allow the villagers to articulate some of the concerns, the perceived concerns that they believe is going to be done upon them, should these developments occur, should this development be approved. And to me, that's the bottom line. And whether it belongs in Chapter 40, I don't know. In fact, I really don't think it belongs in Chapter 40. I really think it belongs, yeah, in Title 26, Chapter 64 of the zoning law. And, but I, I think the bottom line is that something should be done, and, and it's important from this point forward that it be done, because, you know, Guam is going to grow. And, you know, we talk about the military buildup and, and the, the, the outlying effects of the military buildup to the community. Imagine the impact, not just in Dedado, but potentially down in Aggett and Sanarita, you know, with naval station growing as well, in addition to what's going up in Northwest Field in Anderson. And so, you know, and we want to make sure that it's done prudently. And more importantly, in the southern villages, as they have pointed out clearly, is that they're, what they're trying to do, and it's even in the zoning law, they talk about the pristine beauty of our island, that the whole intent, the whole adoption of Chapter 64 was to maintain the pristine beauty of this island. And in order for us to do that effectively as, as the leadership for our respective villages, we've got to be allowed the mechanism to be given input, an input that will carry weight, you know, when these proposals are being made. And more importantly, notification. I mean, you know, as I, you know, I told the director nonetheless, that, you know, it's in the district. I mean, I would have figured that this development is within 500 feet of my borders, that, you know, that, that somebody would have thought to at least officially notify me, in my office, that this public hearing was going to occur. He says, well, you know, Mayor, you know, we only were required to notify private landowners, you know, who are within a 500 radius, 500-foot radius of this project. And I said, well, aren't the, don't the easements that are within a 500-foot radius, don't they fall under my jurisdiction? And shouldn't I have been notified? He says, well, it's not government agencies, it's private landowners. And so I'm thinking, and I went back to Chapter 64 that he referenced, and sure enough, private landowners within a 500-foot radius. But it just, you know, common, to me, common sense would have dictated that, that the mayor of Orde Chalampago should have been notified. And, and then even, you know, even beyond that, that when I requested that a similar public hearing occur in Orde Chalampago, that that should have been given some consideration, regardless of, regardless of whether or not it would have added to the cost of the developer, you know, to hold a second public hearing in our district. As a matter of fact, oftentimes, you know, that when you guys introduce a bill, you hold these legislative, legislative public hearings, I've never seen the legislature, when there's a request made by the, by a mayor, that says, can we hold this public hearing, or a similar public hearing down in our village, that you've denied that. You know, that you guys would in fact take your equipment and, and invite the, the senators to come down to our village to listen to testimony in our respective villages. But for us to be denied the same courtesy by a developer because it's not required by law, I, I think that's wrong, because these guys are potentially going to make millions of dollars at the expense of the residents living in and around that area. Millions of dollars. And, and, and that just didn't make sense, didn't make sense to me. And so I, I thank you for this opportunity to at least speak on this. And I know that there's probably need, I, I know, having read the draft bill, that there definitely is some tweaking. And I, I echo Senator Tom Attia's concerns about, you know, a little bit, what I believe to be some ambiguity in the, in the writing of the bill. And as Mayor Tayama said, we're not lawmakers, and, you know, we don't have necessarily the skill sets to, to accurately reflect what we were trying to get across in a legislation similar to this. But I think with the meeting of the minds, and, you know, that's sitting down with the mayors and listening to what they have to say, and, and your skill sets within the legislature, we can definitely come up with a bill that makes sense, that's going to allow us to further the, the purpose of our zoning laws, and further the intent of our zoning laws. And that's to protect the, the pristiness of our, our island, and more importantly, the environment in itself. You know, to make sure that we're not, you know, we're not disregarding the importance of our island and our island's environment over development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gogui. At this time, I will go ahead and call the next member, panel members up to the table. We have Mr. Bill Kondav, Mr. Randy Sablon, and I'm Mr. Sal Babalta. Again, I'll ask all of you to state your name for the record, where you're from, and if you support or don't support the bill, then proceed with your testimony.
My name is Bill Kondav. I'm from Aggett. And I'm a team member of Safe Southern Guam. I think this bill is, I'm sort of supportive on, on it. However, I think it's putting the bull before the cart, I mean, the cart before the bull, I'm sorry. You've mentioned the, there's a law to have a Southern Development Board or something like that. And I think we should revive that law and encompass everything that's being said here. All the, the Land Commission, what all the mayors are saying, all the concerns. When we get that law together and bring everybody together, we can, we can, we can prevent putting the cart before the bull, get everybody's concern, and include the people who are affected. I think it's very important that, that we do. Your in-depth analysis of what's going on as Senator is spot on. There's too much ambiguity. There's, there's too much one up, one down as far as what needs to be done. So I think reviving that law, putting the commission members together, and bringing everybody together, I think we, we can go for it much better. And I, I have a little feeling that based on all the emails that you were getting, there, there's a little rush on Bill 218. It appears to me that there could be an unwritten intention on, on Bill 218. It appears that it could bypass the Land Trust Commission hearing, and have the MPC decision stand as the people's decision for the Land Trust Commission. Is that part of this intention? I hope not. And also, why are you singling out only the southern villages? The changes you've tried to make already exist in 5GCA, Chapter 40, subsection 40128, items C, D, and F. They're all in here. And, and just, let me tell you what C is. Hold public, this is the MPC, hold public, joint public hearings with the mayor and vice mayor, if applicable on matters affecting the community. Cooperate, just D, cooperate with mayor and vice mayor, if applicable, in whatever manner appropriate to ensure the well-being of the residents of the community. Section F, review and express a view of all variances, applications, zone changes, government leases involving land with their district pursuant to subsection 61623, 61638, and 60115 of Title 31 of Guam Code Annotated. So, so what you have mentioned in your bills already in, in the system, and all you're doing is singling out the south. I think that everybody should be included, because they all have the same concern. All villages should have the same say-so and same concerns. But I realize, and that, that because of what's going on now, as far as the proposed hotel in Aggett, there seems to be, in my opinion, a rush to, to, to get this in there. So if you decide to go on and, and do this, I would like to, to just read what I propose for Section 1 of 218. The municipal planning councils for the, the municipal planning councils of the municipalities of Peti, Sanarita, Aggett, Yamatic, Mariso, Inarohan, Telefofo, and Jonya shall exercise due diligence by announcing and conducting at least two town hall meetings, one during the day, one during the evening, prior to reviewing and expression, and expressing its approval or disapproval of proposed hotels and similarly large commercial development, requiring the review and consent of the land commission, and on all application for Guam's qualifying certificate programs and other investment incentive authorized by law. Meeting announcements shall be made via public media, such as newspaper, television, loudspeaker throughout the villages five days prior to the town hall meetings. The municipal planning council shall audio-record town hall meetings and keep as minutes of the meetings. I think that it's very important that we have, we announce these meetings, and then that we record these meetings to ensure that we can go back and look at what happened during these meetings. As far as Section, Section 2, I propose the following change. The municipal planning councils should exercise due diligence by announcing and conducting two town hall meetings, one during the day, and one during the evening, prior to reviewing and expressing its approval or disapproval on all variance application, zone changes, and government leases, land within their districts pursuant to subsection 61623, 61638, and 60115 of Title 21, Guam Code Annotated. Meeting announcements shall be made via public media, such as newspaper, television, loudspeaker throughout the villages five days prior to the town hall meeting. The municipal planning council shall record town hall meetings and keep minutes, and keep as minutes of the meetings. So I, I support your intent. I support what you're trying to do. But I think we're putting the bull, I mean, the cart before the bull. And I think that we should have the meeting of the minds, intelligently looking at all options, and then we go from there. The other thing you might want to consider, I wrote an article in the newspapers the other day, you know, we have all of this, this stress that goes on when we have this, this meeting with, with the developers. We always have to defend our land, our sea, our, our culture, and everything that we have concerned in our villages. We have to defend it against the developers. And if we do not, if we do not stand and energetically defend ourselves... And if we do not, if we do not stand and energetically defend ourselves, it's a done deal, like the gentleman said, the mayor from Chalampago. So I think you might want to consider in the future to reverse this process and have a, a, a conversation since inception of the development, a conversation with the people in the villages so that their concerns are, are laid out front with, with the developers and, and they can hash it from the onset, not later on where we have to defend ourselves to the developers. It shouldn't be that way. We shouldn't have to defend ourselves in our, in our home country, especially from these outside developers. So that, that's my, my testimony. So I think that we should do, um, a, a meeting of the minds prior to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Condev. Uh, Mr. Sablon?
Madam Chair, Senator Tina Munyon-Barnes, Senator Morrison, Senator Adams. My name is Randy Sablon. I'm a resident of the village of Agania Heights. And, um, I'm generally in favor of the intent of Bill 218-33, but like expressed with other folks here, maybe with some modifications. I have some testimony I'm going to read from orally and then I'd like to submit written later. I'll send it by email or fax to, to the committee. I wanted to start out by, by just noting a few things and, and it was really good to listen to the mayors earlier. In communities elsewhere, not on Guam, the, the duties, responsibilities, and functions of municipal government is far, far greater than it has ever been on Guam. In fact, when you talk about zoning and the approval of, of development through a commission of some sort, typically that happens in the, in the town or at the city level. State government doesn't dictate to the, to the community. In Guam, we're small, so territorial government has a land use commission. We have many commissions and boards, and they have the power and the authority to, to make decisions. Some pretty important decisions for communities. So there's an argument to be made for the way our government is structured where mayors don't have that authority. We, we sort of, it's delegated from governor, legislature, elected officials to commissions, but not any further down. Maybe it's worked for many years and, you know, it's not a perfect system, but communities all over the country, and I, I remember one in particular driving through Concord, Massachusetts with my brother, and it was an idyllic town. It's a historic town. And they have very strict standards for what can be developed in that town. And he noted to me, I don't know if it's true even today, but he said, um, McDonald's is, is not allowed in this town. The golden arches are, are neon signs. They, well, the, the city council, and maybe even by name of that corporation, exclude that type of development. So I would think that that's quite extreme. You know, I, I'm not advocating for something like that, but I'm just saying that the power of communities to plan in other jurisdictions is far greater and, and there's a good variety to learn from and, and look at as we begin to empower our mayors a little bit more in the planning process. I'll go ahead and read my testimony. It's not very long, so we can move this along. Just, okay, so I'm from Agania Heights, but I, I own property in Talafoco, hope to build a home there. It overlooks EPAN. I also own, uh, some property in Gigo, and it's right up against the boundary of natural area referred to as ANO. So that's, uh, it's in the Chamor Land Trust inventory. It's kind of identified as conservation area, and it's about 600 acres. But I'm, uh, my family's land, we're right neighbors with, uh, with ANO. It's a beautiful place also, and it's in the north. So I, I think that, you know, there, there are concerns for how this goes island-wide. During my 16 years with the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, I served as the agency's representative to the Application Review Committee, which reviews and makes recommendations on nearly all development actions by the Guam Land Use Commission, the GLUC. I reviewed and drafted agency position statements or signed them as the administrator for the agency, the acting administrator for the agency, for hundreds of GLUC applications dating back to 1991. I don't know how many hundreds, but it's somewhere between 500 and 700 because one time I calculated it for my, for like a resume, and I was like, wow. When I went back and looked at how much, it was like, we had a, we had a development boom here before, and so the land use commission just, they couldn't keep up. We just had all kinds of development being proposed. I'm here today to offer my perspective on the GLUC process. And Mayor Gogui talked about maybe this ought to be in, I think it's supposed to be Title 21, Chapter 61 is the zoning law. I wouldn't disagree with that. I think, I think the zoning law is probably where you need to modify this to, to bring the mayors in. That being said, it'll probably work in both locations. My overarching, um, point this morning is that development review and approval, that process under the GLUC does not adequately account for the vision and desires of our communities. I don't think it ever has, to be honest. The GLUC process does not do enough to balance village character and quality of life with economic development. In fact, when proposals are controversial, the process almost always results exclusively in confrontation, pitting village residents against developers. There's really no opportunity to plan collaboratively because developers buy land and develop plans independently as business proposals. This means development plans are largely business confidential undertakings until a zone change or a variance is desired to support that plan. Even the community, even then, the community typically gets one opportunity to voice concerns and offer solutions at one village meeting. Then there's one last opportunity to reiterate their concerns at the GLUC hearing. Then the request can be approved. That's the short version, and I've seen it happen before. I have many, many times. This is the end of the public involvement process and near the end of the business development process. When developers approach the GLUC, they have already invested large sums of money for land, for designs, engineering, and consulting services, a point where their vision and plan is the only plan the GLUC can reliably refer to. Southern Guam communities do not have an updated land use plan or zoning standards to guide the GLUC. It is not the GLUC's job to undertake land use planning, but by rezoning, they effectuate change incrementally, often through small area and scale development approvals, or sometimes dramatically with large commercial development, however you wanted to find that. You know, is, is Inn on the Bay large development? It's a hotel. Probably kind of fits what the South would be looking for. I don't know. Compounding the problem, the planning problem is the fact that the GLUC has unlimited variance authority. The law specifies height, density, and setback requirements as maximums, but anyone can request a variance of any scale. I take issue that the law does not put boundaries on variances. The sky can be the limit, almost literally, in a variance application, from my experience. I remember when PIC proposed their first two towers. I reviewed that project and everyone was like, wow, really? That tall? Well, I think, you know, Dusitani is taller than that now, but there is, there is no, there are no boundaries for the land use commission. They can do whatever they want if you put in the variance request. Another planning issue is the bother, that is bothersome to me, is that zone changes and variance decisions can be permanent and run with the land in perpetuity. I have no issue if the developers actually build what they represent to the community. I believe the case of the high-rise development in Aggett involves an early 1990s zone change from agriculture to PUD, planned unit development, requiring an integrated plan. That's a key issue, the integrated plan, because I think that's how they're going to come back to the community. The original developer, developer, if I recall accurately, was a company called Nomura. It was very controversial when it came before the GLUC. The developer never built the development and has evidently sold the land. The zone and the conceptual high-rise development presented some 23 years ago. This controversial development was approved before anyone in Aggett ages 18 to 22 was even born. Community values and visions for quality of life can change, so why should a development plan, unrealized, not built, after so many years, still be valid? Just another perspective, right? I recommend that zone changes, and this may be another piece of legislation at some other time, and variances be limited to five to seven years. And if circumstances dictate that the original plan does not materialize to some degree, I don't know what that would be. Have they built 20% of the development, 50%? If it has not developed to some degree, the variances then should expire automatically. And maybe, this would be a harder one for, for people to swallow, maybe the zone change should revert also. But at least the variance, I mean, you know, because they've presented something to the people, and then they go away and they never, and 23 years later, someone comes and goes, oh, I'm going to make use of that variance. Well, I don't know. Let's talk about that. I've got grandchildren now. They might not agree with that type of variance or how that, how that would have played out in community character. I'd like to, I'd like to read my suggested language modifications to Bill 218-33. I actually think that you need to write, if you're going to stay in, in, uh, where it is now in, in Title 5, you probably ought to just combine some of those sections into one and kind of treat it comprehensively. But I would propose this for J and then a new K. The municipalities of the councils of all the way through, I'm not going to read all the villages, but I did Ad or Chalampago, shall review and cast their vote of approval, approval with conditions, or disapproval on proposed zone changes, variances, conditional uses, and seashore clearances, leases of government land or exploitation of natural resources contained within or on government land for commercial uses, including but not limited to hotels, resorts, multifamily dwellings, which is R2, industrial, including mineral extraction, retail wholesale, and marine transportation facilities within their districts, requiring the review, consent, and action by the GLUC, the Guam Seashore Protection Commission, the Chamor Land Trust Commission, the Natural Resources Board, which hardly anybody even knows about, and on all applications for Guam's qualifying certificate programs, et cetera, as Morrison has drafted. The votes of the municipal planning councils, this goes beyond anything any of the senators said, but they, I mean, the mayors said up here, but they alluded to it. It's an increase in power. So here's a way that we make, we make the mechanism for this to happen. The votes of the municipal planning councils shall count individually as one person, one vote, for the number of votes determining a simple majority at their level in the village. So some of them have 10, right? So you need six to get it to pass. And added to the commission, the GLUC's, uh, the commissions named above, like the Guam Land Use Commission, to their voting total tabulation, and likewise, the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors for the QC stuff. And they shall exercise due diligence, et cetera, et cetera. So the concept here is if you have 10 members on the municipal planning council and you're, they're talking about a development, they say, okay, we're done talking, let's vote. So the 10 council members vote, and let's just say they get six for disapproval and four for approval. Okay, the next step is those six votes, whatever the number of votes is that makes the decision, those votes are added to the seven votes at the GLUC automatically. So actually, the way the voting goes at GLUC is, um, you have, you have six plus seven, right? You have 13. Now, now you have 13 land use commissioners for all intents and purposes. So you need to get, you need to get 50% plus one of that 13, yes, you know, to get the approval of the, of the development. Well, you already got six from the village that are saying no. So, um, what's half of, you know, so you need, you need seven? So if there's one vote on the Guam Land Use Commission for no, it's like veto. I mean, it's done. There's not, you can't get enough. The law right now says that you need four affirmative votes to pass anything at the Guam Land Use Commission. It really means a majority. Uh, you can change that. So that's my way of saying, that's how you empower these guys. They can express their approval or disapproval all they want. We've been doing this for, we've been doing this for at least 30 years. I've seen so many public hearings in the villages, even when I was an employee of GovGuam. I, as an EPA employee, I sit in the background, I don't say anything. And villagers, when it's controversial, when, when it's not controversial, nobody shows up. When it's controversial, you know, 100 people come in, they yell at each other for three hours, you know, and drink coffee and eat empanada. I mean, this system is no good for us. I mean, if anything, we're just, we're not being community. But why is that? That's because the plan that everybody's looking at is the developer's plan. Well, what was the expression of the people of that village? Well, they don't have a plan. I was a subconsultant with ICF International, and we developed the Northern Central Guam Land Use Plan. We were contracted out of Bureau of Statistics and Plans. That was during the two years I was actually a private consultant. So I know how that goes, and it's time that they have it down south. Here's my K. I'm going too long. This is basically a sunset provision, but watch how this, how this plays on land use planning. K, Section 401 28-J shall sunset immediately upon enactment into force of a Southern Guam Land Use Plan and zoning standards for the municipalities identified in J. If the Southern Land Use Plan is not enacted within three years of the effective date of this section and the preceding section, J, then an immediate moratorium shall be in effect on all zone changes, this is very specific, okay? I'm narrowing it here, on all zone changes to hotel resort, otherwise known as H, PUD, planned unit development, and multifamily residential, R2. Nothing else. There's other things the commission can do, it's not under the moratorium. Why just these zones? These are the population-driven zones. These are where they ask for density variances and height variances. To get more density, you got to go higher, right? Because you can't go too far, you've got lot boundaries, but the sky's the limit. What I'm doing is I'm ratcheting this up. What we're doing is we're forcing somebody to do a land use plan for the southern villages. And if it doesn't get done in a timely way, then we choke down just a little bit harder. And we say, oh, we're going to drag our feet? Well, guess what? Now, now we're not going to look at those kinds of zone changes. Because we're not going to get rolled, you know, I don't think the South ought to get rolled through, you know, economic development boom number two, inspired by the military buildup, and someone in government doesn't do their job, right? And it just goes and goes, and we kind of forget that we need to do land use planning. And, after I name the zones, and the maximum level of variance that may have been approved by the GLUC in any zone shall not exceed 30% of that allowed by law on the effective date of this section for commercial uses and development, including but not limited to, and I have that list again. Thank you for the opportunity to provide my testimony. The 30% variance to me is pretty important. Right now, it's like three stories in the zoning law because we don't update the zoning law very often. Never mind the land use plan, we don't even update the zoning law. So it's three stories. They're coming in in Pago Bay for 15. That's 500% variance, about 500, three times five is 15, right? What's a 30% variance? It's one story. You either stick to what the law says is the limit. That's the law. That's what it says. It's three stories. You, you have the right to request. You don't have the right to the variance. The commission has to approve that. So what should the commission do? Well, in this interim period, eh, give them another, another story, go to four. No big deal, you know, let's be reasonable. You want to do a little more, let's go to five. We can talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sablon. Mr. Babalta?
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Mr. Sal Babalta. I'm from Aggett. And, um, good morning, Senator Morrison. Thank you for this opportunity. And I, I echo the sentiments of, um, the mayors and the folks that have submitted some input. I, essentially, I'm in support of Bill 218. On the other hand, it needs some, some modifications and, and some, some tweaking. Let me just hear that, about, about the makeup of the commissions and board of directors. I have a daughter who works at, um, at, in California, sees the executive manager or executive director for the Solana Transit System. And the makeup of her board of And the makeup of her board of directors consists of the mayor of Valeo, the mayor of Benicia, the mayor of Susun, and council members. These are people who are directly communicated to by their constituents with regards to issues regarding transit system for Solana County. And then they go to her and say, hey, I have a constituent who had complained about this. We need to make sure that it's done. So you know what I'm trying to convey here is that perhaps the makeup of the commissions of Governor Guam and board of directors ought to include the, the mayors, some members of the mayors, at least in the voting process, that the mayors be heard in the approval or disapproval of any type of projects. Because they're the ones that are directly impacted with regards to whatever project is going to exist within their, their village or villages. So like I said before, I'm generally in supportive of Bill 218. But I have some, some other information that I'd like to, to share with, with the legislature that perhaps may become, can enlighten some of the, the process in terms of economic development. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to voice my sentiments regarding 218 introduced by our Southern Guam senator, Senator Tommy Morrison. It was at Southern Illinois University while pursuing a graduate degree program in workforce education and development, that my class and me were engaged in a very interesting discussion relative to growing an economy. While there may be many factors that affect economic growth, we narrowed our discussion to five key elements: infrastructure, buildings, telecommunications, quality of life, and workforce. Let me just share a brief overview of each. With regards to infrastructure, water, power, sewer, roads, drainage system must be effectively addressed to meet the needs of the planned developments. Such developments can be for hotels, residential areas, subdivisions, businesses, et cetera. Buildings. Buildings and facilities need to be aesthetically compatible with the local surroundings, maintainable, energy efficient, equipped with state-of-the-art telecommunications, other infrastructure needs, and the, and the like. In this day and age, green buildings must be mandatory. Telecommunications, in order for business owners and decision-makers to make well-informed and effective decisions, and for businesses to survive in a global economy, they need relevant current information. And one of the best places to find such information is through the internet. Their ability to communicate with customers and other individuals is dependent on a good telecommunications system. Quality of life. To attract tourists, other visitors, and businesses, quality of life must be, must also be addressed. Basic fundamental questions must be deliberated. A few questions with, with respect to quality of life are as follows. Is it a safe place to open up a business for families, customers, and employees? How are the schools, the hospitals, the shopping centers, restaurants, parks, sports activities, bicycle routes, transit systems? Workforce, are there well-trained, educated individuals that I can hire from? Or do I have to bring employees that I can trust from other areas of the island or from off-island? Therefore, with respect to economic growth to Southern Guam, I respectfully ask the legislature to ensure that a well-thought-out Southern Guam economic development plan with input from Southern Guam residents are carefully considered. Suggest that those factors that are essential in growing an economy be looked at and included in the plan. I am quite sure that the Southerners will not agree to any hotel construction, any kind of buildup without good water, power, sewer, drainage, telecommunications, quality of life, and other Chamor culture, and that the Chamor culture is greatly respected. Regarding the proposed hotel construction at Aguej, I recommend the following be addressed prior to any approval or disapproval. Would the water, power, sewer, drainage, and roads be fixed? Will students from the Southern High School, GCCU, or G be allowed to perform internship or cooperative education at the hotel when completed? Would the developers offer scholarships for students from the South who are pursuing higher education? Would the hotel purchase or produce, would the hotel purchase produce from the Southern Guam farmers? Would the Chamor culture be integrated with the hotel construction and operations? Would the quality of live elements be improved? Parks, sidewalks, bike routes be included? Would the hotel owners be willing to sponsor a sports program for the residents? Would the hotel owners help in constructing, constructing a Southern sports complex? Would the residents be given equal opportunity for employment? Would the senior age population be invited to the hotel for social events? Southern Guam residents need good quality of life accommodations. Many Southerners are tired of going uptown for practically all that, all of what they need to do. Senators have touched some of my thoughts relative to economic growth in Southern Guam. I kindly request that the legislature respect the wishes of Southern Guam residents in the law, lawmaking process of economic growth. I appreciate your time for allowing me to testify on Bill 218. Respectfully, Sel Babata, to Tohaget. But again, really to, to, to sum up the essence or the gist of my, my comments is, is certainly to, to really put some thought behind the makeup of the commissions within Governor Guam, that the mayors ought to be part of the voting process in allowing approval or disapproval of projects and developments. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Babata. Senator Addy, do you have comments or questions? Senator Tommy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just have a comment, and I want to thank all those who provided some really great information input. 218 is a start. Of course, I am appreciative of a former colleague of mine that worked closely with Mr. Sblan on many, many occasions, and taking the time to provide some, some input here and how we can broaden the scope of Bill 218. I, the, the, if anything, I wanted to make clear, when we were looking at 218, and how looking at the existing processes there, it was, we didn't want to do too much, like you said, Mr. Conif, about some of the existing language that's there. But we saw the need to start the discussion with, instead of knowing what former legislators have done to, to improve upon the existing legislation, to have an expressed view, I feeling that we needed to tighten lease that area and then go from here with the discussions, as you alluded to, bringing some of the experts, some of the concerns of our community here today. I want to make it very clear that we, we will ensure that we look at this, also existing law, public law 19-38, that, again, there was a lot of forward thinking there to ensure, maybe that we shouldn't even have been here if that was fully implemented, that called for a Southern development plan, and there's a lot of great provisions in there that would have addressed a lot of the concerns that we have here today. But with that, I just want to thank you, Madam Chair, for this holding this public hearing. I want to thank all of us who provided input, our mayors and our residents of our Southern community, and of course, from our, the rest of the island. Thank you.
Sejuas Masi, Senator Morrison, I'd like to thank all the presenters today for presenting their oral testimony to this August body. I do want to note for the record that, based on the information received by a lot of you, we probably should have had a joint hearing with the affected agencies. That comes to mind, Land Management, GIDA, Bureau of Planning, TPW for that matter, Guam Land Use Commission, and even the, what do you call it, the National Resource Board. This is a great start. We do know that there are laws that exist today, the changes that were recommended, recommended by, by you folks, Title 21, 5GCA, Title 26, those things need to be looked at more carefully to see how we can either coincide or collaborate and, or make references to, that, that could help us here. But I want to say I appreciate all the input, and I want to work closely with the author of this legislation to bring the effect of the support of the intent that all of you spoke about today, and probably moving it forward. Further committee work will be done on this, and if we need to have a follow-up hearing to include the impacted groups that are necessary, and maybe make sure that our eyes are dotted and our teeth crossed, then that may have to happen. But from the municipal oversight chair, I want to say on Duncan Sejuas Masi for being here and for your time. I know it's been a couple of hours, but it's really important that this bill be given its fair opportunity, as it came from the request from the Southern folks, to make sure that they have a voice and that they have an input. With that being said, we will call a public, Bill 218-33 publicly heard, and Bill 247, and it is 11:02 a.m. This meeting is, public hearing is now adjourned. Sign him, Masi.